Public speaking in order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the March 19th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. We're going to move right into the consent agenda. We have approval of payroll, March 18th, March 8th, 2019. Approval of minutes, February 5th and February 26th, 2019. We have approval of claims for February 28th, March 7th, and March 14th of 2019. We also have on the consent agenda, three contracts from the Memorial Opera House. We have Caitlin Leonard White. It's an artistic service agreement. Deborah Silbert, venue rental agreement. It's a nonprofit. We have Voice Systems. It's an annual maintenance acceptance agreement for the accounting system. I'll open up the floor to the board.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to move into announcements. We sort of have a real special day here that we would like to honor someone here that has worked for Porter County Government for quite some time. Rich, Rich Sexton, there he is. I was looking for you, Rich. Please come forward and give us, give us what you're up to here. Morning, Rich.
It's very good morning.
That's fine. Yep.
So today, Mark, well, this Friday is Mark Uszleks' last day. He's retired for 22 years of service. None of us want to see him go. He's our side shop foreman, and he takes care of all 800 miles of our signs and on our roads, and he's doing an excellent job over the last few years. Honestly couldn't ask any more out of him and his assistant, which is not even. He's the new side shop foreman. Once Mark leaves, like I said, I just couldn't ask any more out of the guys, especially him, and he's done a great job for us, so.
Thank you.
So at the end of your 22 years of the Highway Department, you get a golden shovel sack by everybody.
Go get it.
Don't worry, we got him the bad watch, too. We just haven't done it yet, so we're waiting for him to get a little closer to Friday, so.
Not that we have any need for any shovels up here.
No, we've never, this is our first one we've ever bought.
Come on in. You're the center of attention. Let's get a photo of everybody with us. Get the middle. Get here.
Get here, Rick.
We have over, I think, 10 or 11 individuals in the Highway Department that have been with the county for over 25 years, and it's, it's a really great department. We have a lot of excellent men that are out there working for us. These are the guys that are out there in the winter, plowing the snow and doing the stuff that's not really a lot of fun, and we're very blessed to have these type of men working for us in this county, and Mark is just one example of that. And hopefully, over the next year, we're going to be bringing more of these gentlemen in front of you to let you know who they are and what they do for the county. It's important to us to recognize these men and women who work in this county and have for quite some time, so be looking for more of that in the future. So that was, that's, that's, that's the fun part of our job, so.
If anybody knows any sales going on for shovels, let us know.
Yeah, we need more shovels and gold paint. Next on the agenda, we're going to move right into the Commissioners' portion of this. We're going to receive and open bids for North County Annex Bid Package Number Two. As you all know, we're in a big, major renovation mode within county government. This, this project here, Bid Package Number Two, is going to encompass the North County Annex, the addition, and the new building, so this bid package that's going out now will take us to the next series and stages of work on this bid package on the North County. So with that, we're going to start opening up bids, so let her rip.
All right. Just a few quick announcements. Make sure two low guys get your seven products list turned in. Block out some time Thursday. We've got pre-award scheduled, and we're going to be awarding contracts Friday, this Friday, so just, it's going to be a quick turnaround, so with that, we'll go ahead and get started. We started big category one, general trades. First bidder, Zielkowski Construction, I'm sorry, big category four. Big category four, general trades. Base bid, $1,529,000. $1,529,000.
Yeah, for everybody in, that are here for this, we will be awarding this this Friday in a special Commissioners' meeting at 10:00 a.m. in these chambers, so that's when we will be awarding this project. Today, we're just opening up bids, and we'll turn it over to our steelmen to review the bids to make sure that they're done properly, and then we'll be turning around a week from now and awarding, less than a week. Sorry, go ahead, Derek.
That's all right. Next bidder, big category four, Gary Up Construction. Base bid, $1,439,500. Next bidder, Pangier Corporation. Base bid, $1,407,190. Last bidder for big category four, Gibson Lewis. Base bid, $1,550,500. Okay, moving on to big category five, metal studs and drywall. First bidder, Goff Incorporated. Base bid, $881,470. Next bidder, Pangier Corporation. Base bid, $944,046. Next bidder, Kletner Interior Systems. Base bid, $847,333. All right, we have a combination bid for big categories four and five submitted by Pangier Base bid, $2321,236. All right, moving on to next category, big category six, painting. First bidder, Oosterbound Incents. All right, last bid for painting, Stans Painting and Decorating. Okay, moving on to big category seven, flooring. First bidder, Master Tile Incorporated. Base bid, $358,800. Next bidder, Zielkowski Construction. Base bid, $389,000. Next bidder, Interior Finishes. Base bid, $353,280. All right, last bidder for big categories, seven, flooring. Midwest Tile and Interiors. Base bid, $307,804. Okay, moving on to big category eight, fire protection. First bidder, State Line Fire Systems. Base bid, $164,370. Next bidder, Shambo and Son. Base bid, $165,950. Last bidder for fire protection, United States Alliance Fire Protection. Base bid, $191,458. Okay, moving on to big category number nine, plumbing. First bidder, Arctic Engineering. Base bid, $408,400. Next bidder, Mechanical Concepts. Base bid, $538,500. Next bidder, Gatlin Plumbing and Heating. Base bid, $435,000. Next bidder, Circle R Mechanical. Base bid, $424,130. Next bidder, LGS Plumbing. Base bid, $558,88. Next bidder, Keel Mechanical. Base bid, $543,192. All right, last bidder for big category nine, plumbing. Reichelt Plumbing. Base bid, $430,000. Okay, moving on to big category 10, HVAC Mechanical. First bidder, Gatlin Plumbing and Heating. Base bid, $1,355,000. Next bidder, Circle R Mechanical. Base bid, $1,499,000. Next bidder, Arctic Engineering. Base bid, $1,386,000. Next bidder, Mechanical Concepts. Base bid, $1,292,900. All right, last bidder for big category 10, DA Dodd. Base bid, $1,610,845. Okay, moving on to the final big category, electrical, a big category number 11. First bidder, Continental Electric. Base bid, $1,026,350. Next bidder, Circle R Electric. Base bid, $940,125. Okay, the last bidder for big category 11, Higher Electric. Base bid, $1,094,500. That concludes today's bid opening. Thank you, everybody.
So as we said, we'll be meeting back in these chambers at 10 o'clock on this Friday to award this bid package number two for the North County Annex Project, so thank you. Derek? Yeah. There's some more to here, too. All right. Thanks, Derek. We're going to keep moving on here. Next, next item on our agenda is a resolution for order, for an order on poll worker payroll, pay, poll worker pay, not payroll, pay. And do we want to have the clerk? Yeah. Hi, Jessica. How are you today? Good. How are you? Welcome. I know you've been busy.
Just a little.
Just a little, right? So what we have before us here is an order on poll worker pay, and you want to go ahead and give us sort of the, what the pay is and give us the breakdown, the resolution part. You don't have to read the resolution. I think we're more interested in the pay and for what workers, and so you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. So the suggestion is to raise the pay for clerks and judges to $150 for the day, and then the inspector pay to $175. And then, in addition to that, the inspector would get an additional $15, and the judge opposite party of the clerk would have another $15 in order to bring back the supplies at the end of the day, so that would raise the inspector to $190, and the, at this point in time, the Republican judge would receive $165 for the day. And then raise the meal period from $15 to $20 for the day, and then training, a total of $50 for attending training.
Go ahead, Laura. Go ahead.
Well, all inspectors end up with $190.
Yes, because part of their responsibility is to bring back the materials at the end of the election night, so they would receive them.
I'm just trying to jive what you said with what we have on paper.
It's a little confusing.
Yeah. And I also think the training for poll workers is new, correct?
Yes.
We've never paid for.
They've been trained, I know.
Yeah, well, right, but we've never paid for the training.
Correct.
Which this is in addition to that as well.
Yes.
Okay.
So every poll worker will be required to attend a training. We're estimating the training will be roughly three hours, and for that, they'll be compensated $50. They, if they're still unsure, they're more than welcome to attend additional trainings because they're only being paid for one training.
Okay.
And what do they get paid now?
Well, it depends on which, which category you're on. I believe it was around $115 for clerks and judges and $130 for inspectors.
Okay. And not, and no training?
No training, and they weren't paid the money to bring back the equipment, and their meals were $15 for the day.
So this is a significant bond.
Oh, absolutely.
Hopefully will attract some more poll workers.
And how do you feel about these paid, pay, the documented pay that if we were moving, or do you feel comfortable with this?
Yes, it's been a long time since there's been any increase in pay for poll workers, and so I do think that it's important that we keep up with the state, with everybody else. There's a spreadsheet statewide of where everybody sits with pay and whether they pay for training, whether they don't pay for training, what they do for meals. There's a whole, a whole lot of different options that are available, and I think this structure helps them.
Good. And I think there should be clarification on, you know, we use the term a day, a day, a day, and this is, I think most of us up here know, and certainly you, is, you know, at minimum, this is a 12 to 14 hour day.
Correct.
So.
Jim, do you ever remember this being raised?
No.
You put it around the lobby.
No.
So it's time.
And I think that in some small way, that, that has contributed to why we struggle every election in finding poll workers. It's just, it has been a struggle, as everybody knows, so hope it helps. I think it will.
We've had quite a lot of interest already. I think people are wanting to be a part of change. There's new equipment, there's a whole lot of new happening in this election, and I think people want to be a part of it, and we've had many, many people reach out, so fingers crossed.
Well, you know, despite what's been in the paper the last week, I think that there's a lot of positive things happening with, you know, with the, with the election, and I think that, you know, we'll, we'll see the fruits of that, you know, the day after this, this coming election. I think, I think we're on the right track, and don't let one week, you know, form an opinion as to what's really been going on here, so.
I agree. A motion to approve the resolution, order on poll worker pay.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the resolution for order on poll worker pay. Discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And now, we're going to move into another resolution, and this is allowing the Porter County clerk to recycle old voter equipment. Now, just to make sure, that's not the machines.
No, no.
Okay, I just, but go ahead and give.
And not old voters.
No. We still encourage some to come out.
You're safe, Jim.
This is equipment that predates the equipment we just traded in, so there's virtually no reason to keep it around. I have reached out to the historical societies, and they're each interested in obtaining one for each, and then besides that, Metro agreed to come take it for a minimal fee and give us a little bit that we can put towards the new machines.
So the history will never escape us.
It won't.
On what happened last year, which is, thanks, Kevin.
Hanging chads on these.
Any other questions with the board on this?
The only thing we're doing with the resolution is Commissioners are making the determination that the property is either worthless or the cost of disposal outweighs the value of the property, so pursuant to 52228, or 522228, we're going to make this resolution, and that would allow Metro to pick it up and then deduct off the pickup charge the 20 cents a pound for the recycling.
So our waste and recycling department should be very happy that we're recycling this equipment, so we're just following through with what we do up here, right?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution allowing the Porter County clerk to recycle old voter equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. And I think that's what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you guys. We, we got your back. If you need anything, let us know up here. We're all getting there together. I like it. Next up, we got county website redesign, and this is our Kurt Ellis. So Kurt, I know we've been meeting on this for quite some time. This has been something that has been much discussed over the last couple of years, so take us down the path, yeah.
Basically, our current contract with Citi Plus allows for a free upgrade to the new platform and a redesign of our website, which we need to get going on right away because they stopped supporting the current platform we're on at the end of this year. But they offered us some different options, some add-ons, I think that, as we talked about, would greatly help not only in the speed of doing this, but in delivering a product that will be much more friendly to our public when they try to access the website. The first one is recommended navigation for $2,2500. Basically, they will come up with a proposed site map for our, for the redesigned website based on the analytics from our website. In other words, they're going to say, what are people looking at, and how can we make that, those important things easier for them to access on the website? That includes the redesign of the homepage, of the menus, et cetera. I, I like the idea of having an independent third party look at that because it, it's going to be very, it's going to be data-based, and it will really help our, our citizens access what they want to find on the website.
Right.
The second thing is, is what they call the content optimization, and that's a $2,500 fee, where basically, they take all of the current content that's on our website and move it into what they call widgets on the new platform, and they move all the text, they move all the images, they make sure all of the links and, and HTML where we have different platforms embedded into our website. and HTML where we have different platforms embedded into our website. They will make sure all of that is done and working correctly. That literally... There's no way that I could get that done by myself by the end of this year. Simply because of the sheer amount of data on the website. And then the third component is that they would offer eight hours of virtual training on the new platform for $1,250. This is going to be later in the process. And what I would like to do is kind of work out a train, the trainer, for the different departments, the major users on the website. It's so much easier to use because as you know, we built the expo, the shelter and the opera house on this new platform. It's much easier to use, it's much easier to learn. So I think that that training amount will be enough. And just as we have discussed, this new platform will be mobile-friendly, okay? No more having to go through some crazy app to find things. No more trying to figure out how to get to the real content that you're looking for. It will be truly mobile-friendly.
The new age.
21st century.
Yes.
Well, the site that we have now, I mean, it really is dated. It's difficult to navigate through, especially if you're not, you know, real familiar with navigation through a website. Yeah, I think it's long overdue and as you know, you presented what it's going to look like. And it's going to be easy to navigate.
Yeah, much better.
Much better, so...
I think the thing for me that I'm the most excited about was the last... Our current website really never gave us any analytical data. And I think if you're trying to design a website for the public to where you can give them information, the only way that you're going to know whether you're hitting that is by the counts and the clicks, right?
Correct.
And so what this will allow us to do now is to monitor and be able to see where the community is going. What are they finding interesting? What are they finding that they want more of? And we'll be able to look at those numbers too. And now we can take certain dropdowns and things to where maybe this department needs a little bit more robust, maybe this doesn't. And so what it'll allow us to do is to manage our content and our data in a much more targeted manner. And I think for the taxpayers, I think that's very key. Because I think we're going to find some things that work real well and people want more of. And there's going to be other things that will be maybe more static. But we can move this around and we can work with it. So what I like about it is we're going to continually be mining this website, continually upgrading it, continually morphing it into where the customer or... Not customer...
The customer.
The customer, our taxpayers can get to this information to where it makes their life a little more easier and they can do it from the comfort of their own home or their mobile app. And that's what we're trying to get to here. So this is a big step. It's not just sort of a website upgrade. I know Kurt has... And I'd also like to point out, you know, the other option here, we have $1,250 for virtual training. If we had to hire someone from... The other option was we bring a trainer in here for 10 grand and they train all of our people. And I think with Kurt here, taking ownership of this website through the commissioner's office, we're also saving money again by not... We have people that can come in and train and then we'll be able to train the trainers in the departments to where there's more than just one person sitting down in a dark room that knows about this website. We can start making other people within county government, understanding how it operates, how it works. And I think anytime that you can do that, you empower your organization and you empower your people. And that's what we're trying to get to here. So I think that's a neat feature of this.
The other thing is the functionality.
Yes.
Is that it's not just a website you go to look at, it's a website you can interact with.
Yep.
And I know with the shelter and expo and the opera house, we've set up a ton of online forms where people can, from their mobile... From their phone or mobile device, if they want to ask a question, they don't have to wait until the office hours are open. They can push a button, fill out a short form, boom, it's emailed directly to the contact in the department. And then that person can respond to them very quickly.
One, our documents and forms that people will use are going to be on this website too.
Absolutely, absolutely. And everything that's on the existing website, here's the other thing on moving the content, all of the agendas, the years and years of agendas and documents and everything else that are stored on the current website will be moved over as part of the content optimization.
I think a perfect example of that is when we redid the Expo Center website. Was that a year ago roughly? Maybe two years ago? But now people that are looking to come to that venue, they can get online. They can download, they can download forms, they can download the size of the rooms, they can download the content. This helps us on our side from a labor perspective because we're not out there chasing 20 different brides all the time. The data's coming to us and we're able to simulate it on our terms, on our time. And I think it's just going to ease the operation of what we're doing. And that's just one area, that's just the expo. We're doing it at Emma... We're doing it at other places, the animal shelter. So this is just the next step of the next generation of this county to continue to move forward with technology and keeping up to speed with the ever-so-quickly-changing landscape out there. And we're trying to be more compatible to our people that live in this county, that we can get them that information at the tip of their fingers. And I think as a government, that's what you want to be able to do for your people that pay taxes, so...
That and the efficiency.
And the efficiency, correct. That goes along with it, doesn't it Jim? So I'm excited about this. This is something we've talked about for a long time, but we now have the runway and the time to attack it and go after it and make it what it is. And I know it's in great hands with Kurt. He knows his stuff backwards and forwards and I think we're in a really good spot here. So, thank you Kurt for your leadership on this. It's a big tackle. And when we met and he started going over everything, it's like, ooh, it's a monster.
The expo, shelter and... And we're good training grounds for me on this process.
Yep.
Well, technology can make things more efficient or it can make things a complete nightmare.
Oh, yeah.
As we all know. So this is really going to be...
Well, the mobile utilization is really 90% of it with me.
I get weekly reports from this analytics reports from the shelter, the opera house and the Expo Center. Over 80% of the traffic on those sites is from mobile devices.
That's where it's going.
So it's, I mean, people... I'm probably the only one looking at a desktop every day simply because that's what I do.
You're the 20%.
Yeah, I'm the other 20%. So, but it is, it will make it easier for people. Rather than having to hit that call button, they can hit the fill out a form button and boom.
If they're not having to come in here to pick up a form or two or not have to call up here, ask where they get a form or two, that's just all better for us. It increases the efficiency of the operations of all of our buildings.
Motion to approve the Civic Plus contract.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the Civic Plus contract to update the county's website on a redesign. All those in favor ecstatically, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks Kurt.
Thank you.
Go get them man. Yeah, nice shirt.
I think Kevin was following our style trend.
Oh Kevin's got the... Mine's blue Kevin. I didn't get the memo.
Did they wear their own?
I'm colorblind, so it doesn't matter. How cute. We got comp time report for January, February 2019. Is that something... Do we want to have this come forward for that? Because it's usually in the consent. Oh, okay. So this wasn't in the consent agenda, so we just need to approve the comp.
Motion to approve January and February comp time report.
Second. We have a motion and a second for comp time report for January and February 2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to move to some funding agreements. I think we got Attorney Hollenbeck here. Good morning David.
Good morning commissioners. First of all, I apologize for my voice.
You got some of the crowd.
I'm feeling better than I sound, so I'm on the upside. And Lori apologizes for her inability to be... Join us this morning. At the annual budget hearings, the county council and the visitors' commission come to an agreement as to funding that will be derived from the innkeeper tax revenue and go to three of the venues over which you supervise and have responsibility. And that includes the Memorial Opera House, the Expo Center and the County Museum. The figure that was agreed upon between the county council and the visitors' commission this year was a total of $150,000. That breaks down at $38,120 for the Memorial Opera House, the Expo Center and the museum. And then the fourth entity is the park department, which under their formula will receive less than that. They receive $35,640. So I'm here today asking the commissioners to approve those venue agreements so those monies can be allocated to each of the venues for purposes of promotion of their business. Answer any questions anyone may have.
Well, all of the venues that you have helped out and increased the money to in the last few years, I think have really made the most of it and it's helped them tremendously. They've all made great strides in the time period.
And candidly, having viable, good venues helps the mission of the visitors' commission. So it's a win-win situation.
Much appreciated and I think it's a win-win.
And the third way it's a win is the innkeeper's taxes for the most part paid by people who don't live in Porter County.
I know all about that.
So it's a win-win-win, so to speak.
Motion to approve.
Second. This is a motion sec... Yeah, this is... Could you revise your...
Yeah, motion to approve the cooperative funding and development agreements for each of the three venues listed. Do I need to go through them?
I would name the three venues, just so we got it in the record.
Memorial Opera House, Porter County Expo and the Porter County Museum Foundation.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a cooperative funding development agreement between the Porter County Convention Visitors Bureau Commission and the Porter County Museum Foundation, Porter County Expo and the Memorial Opera House. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you David, good work.
Thank you. Kathy, I have three copies of each of these. I'll give them to you and then you can get inside.
I feel better.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have, on the commissioners, we got Circle R Electric. This is an invoice in the amount of $22,993.38. This is for 157 Franklin. This is for the temporary 4D space. This is just part of the bill that is straggling in from all the work that we did back there on our...
This encompasses all of the Circle R electrical work that was done for the 4D temp office.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for invoice for Circle R Electric in the amount of $22,993.38 for 157 North Franklin. And that's for the temporary 4D space for the prosecutor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to get into the expo renovations, change orders and payouts. I don't think Derek stayed, did he? Oh, there he is. We're going to put you on the hot seat here, just in case we have any questions. Lori, you can come up and join because you're the one that's wanting to spend it all. Just kidding. She's been very good out there. First one, we have Oosterban and Sons. They are... I want to get this right. They're the...
Painter.
Painter, right. They're the painter. This is out at the Expo Center. This is change order number one in the amount of $67,220. And what's the change order for Derek?
Upgraded finishes in Expo East. This was all through the...
So that's all for Expo East?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for change order number one in the amount of $67,220. $67,220. Failed my math class today. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have Midwest Tile and Interiors. This is change order number one and this is in the amount of $19,228. And what was this one for? Is this for Expo East too?
Part of it is Expo East, the bathrooms, putting in the LVT floor tile. There's some carpet in the admin area in here. And I think there was some additional quarry tile patching in the kitchen.
For the, yeah, and for the kitchen too, where we ran, had to cut that floor out? Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, motion and a second for Midwest Tile and Interiors. Change order number one in the amount of $19,228. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to get into the payouts. This is Panjir Corp payout seven in the amount of $69,656.85 for General Trades. And I'll open that up.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second for Panjir Corp payout seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Next up is EC Babila. They're the roofer on the job. Payout number one in the amount of $111,386.55.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for EC Babila. Payout one in the amount of $111,386.55. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Panjir Corp again payout seven. And this is for $25,429.60. This is for metal studs, drywall and acoustical ceilings.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for payout seven for Panjir Corp in the amount of $25,429.60. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. Last one for Expo Center, Continental Electric. Payout number seven in the amount of $84,552.45.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Continental Electric. Payout seven in the amount of $84,522.45. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying sign. Motion carries. That's Expo East. Did we want to make an announcement on the party? Is that final, final? Is the... Lori, is the date set? We're also announcing... Could you maybe come up here quick and just give everybody the real quick date? We are planning on an open house for the Expo Center. And this is put on by the commissioners and the council. And why don't you give us the dates and give us a little bit of a spiel of what's going on here?
On June 13th, which is a Thursday, we're going to do a ribbon cutting at 4:30 and then there'll be a cocktail in order of reception following with tours. People can mingle through. There'll be a short presentation by the commissioners. And just to really showcase what we have, what we've got.
And I also think there's a special... The museum, Kevin, why don't you get... I'm pitch... I'm in pitch mode here. We're pitching the expo, so we got to get it going here. Right? And I thought it was very neat what you did and I want to tell everybody about it.
We were thrilled that Lori agreed to this, but as a special benefit to any of the members of the Porter County Museum, it's a special sneak preview this evening at 5 o'clock out at the expo. It's a glimpse to what's going on, there's great history there and it's getting even better.
It's pretty phenomenal. We get to get tours a couple at a time. We've been trying to not go in a lot. They get a little grumpy when I come in there too much. I can remember when I bring people in. But it's after hours, we just... The ladies are coming through for their tour because their event is in May. So we're really getting people in there to take a look. Next couple of weeks, we're really seeing...
It's a great idea.
We're thrilled. And it's not too late for everybody to reduce their membership.
EC, it's a pitch, it's a pitch in man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Lori.
So yeah, the party will be... We're very good.
Can you give your check to Kevin?
Right, that's the door.
Huge turnout.
Well, we've been out there and I think everybody's going to be very excited. It's really coming together very nicely. Yeah, I saw the pictures this morning. Now you're at the park and the project now where every day's like Christmas.
Yeah.
So that's where you're at now, so...
They're walking every day going to a market. They're walking every day going to a market.
So, well, it's turning out nice. So thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Laurie. So everyone has the date now and we look forward to opening it up to the public. Next up, we have North County Annex. That's the project that we opened bids for this morning. This is a change order number one in the amount of $165,936. And this is for removal of unforeseen unsuitable soils and import sand for the building pad. So basically what happened is, Derek, why don't you give us sort of the, the general what happened kind of deal here?
Yeah, this is for the office or the outbuilding. We stripped the topsoil and removed the asphalt. And once we started digging to verify what was down there, it was very unsuitable, not buildable. So we had to remove all that down and it very, we had the testing agency on site with us to verify quantities and how much we had to remove. It ended up being quite a bit. So now you have a nice solid footprint for your building, so no settling should occur. And we were fortunate with the additions that we did not have any major unforeseen conditions there.
Yep. All right, so this is all outbuilding?
This is all outbuilding.
So, yeah, please clarify that.
So because it's primarily the new building, it's not an addition, this is, at the end of the day, this is shared, this is about a 50-50 share between us as a county and the trustee, and the trustee includes trustee in food pantry.
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to make a note of that because it looks like a big number, but that number is split by the two parties. So that's how it was set up in the agreement going forward with them, so they would share all these costs as we would, so.
And they're very close to 50% of that building.
Yeah. And everybody should understand that this is a big figure, but it's, it's, these sort of things were built into the original, you know, when we originally bonded for this project because it's a renovation. And so it's not, you know, these are monies that we have, they were built into the original amount that, that we borrowed, so there's no problem there. The good news is we didn't have to pay any money for land. The bad news is the land that we have up there has some, some bad pockets in it, but you know, we don't have any land cost.
It's still free.
That's, you know.
Well, I can assure you, if we went out and bought that land, it would have been more than $165,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for change order number one for Zolkowski Construction in the amount of $165,936 for the removal of unsuitable soils and importing of new sand into the building pad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're going to move to courthouse renovation. Just to make another announcement, I think Derek told us this morning that we're starting on the window replacement in the courthouse. Why don't you give us a quick update?
Yep.
Weather broke?
Weather broke. The windows are on site. They actually started last week around the ground floor. We got a few more days around the ground floor and then they got another load of windows coming Monday to start working on the upper windows around the building. It's a lot of coordination with the courts and the public and the staff that's there. But you know, we got somewhat of a plan and we should be wrapped up probably end of May, early June with all the windows.
Good. I have a real quick question while you're bringing this up is, you know, quite a bit of the lawn has been destroyed.
Yep.
Are we going to sod that or seed it?
Seed.
Seed.
You know, we don't have irrigation out there, so sod really won't take that well.
Yep. We got to buy a couple of sprinklers.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address that. We're going to do the areas around the building first, the plantings, because once the ground floor windows are done, we shouldn't be up against the building. And then once they're done trucking around on the site, we'll seed the rest of it.
Okay. So the first payout here is J.W. Wurts. They're the, they're actually the window contractor. And this is payout number one in the amount of $242,250. This is probably just for the windows themselves, I would imagine. So this is for material.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for J.W. Wurts payout number one in the amount of $242,500, $250. This is for the Court Downtown Historic Courthouse renovation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Next up, Midwest Tile and Interiors. This is payout number four in the amount of $5,719. And this is, they're the flooring contractor for the building. I think if you've been in there, you've seen some tiled elevator lobbies and some other things that are starting to happen there, so that's what that's for.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Midwest Tile and Interiors payout number four in the amount of $5,719. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Last one, we ha, no, 19, M-Corps, that's Higher Electric payout six in the amount of They're the electrician on the job.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second for payout number six in the amount of $17,955.27. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Number 20 is Gary Up Construction. This is payout number five in the amount of $48,815.75 with the balance of finish.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Gary Up Construction payout number five in the amount of $48,815.75. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. And then last one, Getlin Plumbing and Heating. And this is the amount of $21,508.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Getlin Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $21,508. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Derek.
All right.
Thank you.
Keep, keep pushing. We'll see you back here on Friday. Next up, we have Nikti. This is Dune Park Station, parking lot expansion. Attorney McClure, you want to give us the update on that?
So back when the Commissioners actually hold titles to the property on the deed out at the Dunes Park Parking Lot, and that goes all the way back to 1994, I believe, when that took title. It took title though, under the conditions that this be utilized for the parking lot at the Dunes Park. So the process has been going through, it looks like DLG is doing the, or at least did the platus survey for the parking lot expansion. This has gone through the National, all the other different places up there that need to approve it. And one of the last stops is for us to approve it. We have it in the agenda items, what they're, where they're talking about adding, just basically be to the east of the parking lot, would expand it out. So the Commissioners just need to approve. Frankly, it's a condition of us owning it or holding title to it. I think we were just the easiest to hold title when we, when it came through. So the Commissioners need to approve the parking lot expansion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approving the Dune Park Station. This is for the parking lot expansion to Nikti. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries.
That'll be a plus.
Yep. Next up, E.M.A. Lance Bella. We're going to get to something that we thought we did a while ago, but we guess we found out we didn't. Good morning, Lance.
Morning.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. What do you got here for us?
Well, last year after the flood, as you remember, we recognized that we really needed to probably do a better job as far as being able to not only deliver materials in the event of a flood to help the citizens, but then a method of being able to put sand in bags in order to help them, rather than them having to do it or us getting a lot of people trying to fill sandbags by hand. So we found a system that could be utilized on the front of a Bobcat where we would have one operator and one person loading bags into a template. This loads 18 sandbags at one time. They scoop up the sand with this device with the Bobcat, shake it, it fills the bags and drops all 18 bags at the same time. So two people could be filling 18 sandbags at one time. And we kind of partnering with the Highway Department where they would store this device and then if needed, they would help deploy it with a Bobcat and an operator or one of our people could operate it.
Okay. And this is a sole, we have the sole source provider that was provided. That's why we don't have multiple.
Yes, sir.
Quotes on this.
Yes, sir.
Obviously something fairly unique.
I think it'll help tremendously, having watched people struggle.
Sure.
With the sandbag process during the flood. So, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a quote from Sand Master. They're a sole source provider for a skid steer, skid steer attachment to fill sandbags in the amount of $12,104. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. We got our sandbagger.
Thank you for sharing your home.
Thanks, Lance. It'll come in handy, hopefully. Hopefully it won't, but we got it if it does. Chuck Harris, Recorder. Okay, no Chuck Harris. So we got a request to approve the standard operating procedure for dispensing blank quick claim deeds and survivorship affidavit.
John, John Miller's in the back, if you want to bring him up for us.
You want to come on up, John? Work a little overtime here?
So the Recorder's Office reached out to me and wanted to do this form, basically outlining that they obviously have a lot of citizens that come up and need a blank quick claim deed or survivorship affidavit. Sometimes the terms of art get lost between a quick claim deed and a warranty deed and things like that. So while the Recorder's Office is providing a blank form for them, for the citizens to be able to fill out, and that probably is taking care of most of the citizens' needs, that's happening, the Recorder's Office wanted to develop this form and I helped them do that. But basically it outlines exactly, you know, that the Recorder's Office isn't providing legal advice, that, you know, there, there may be other issues that this deed is not taken care of. It's a form, treat it like a form. This is, and then this is required that the citizens initial and sign off that they've seen this and understand the limitations of what's happening so that we don't have problems later on down the road.
Okay.
It's basically absolving our office of any claim that we offered legal advice to them in filling the form out because by law, of course, we cannot ask the crux of this in clitor disclaimer, but disclaimer that has to accompany that quick claim deed form when it goes from our office to the assessor, to the auditor and back to us. And that's why we put together a SOP and internal, our office has an SOP, a standard operating procedure document. And we use it, we shared it with the other two offices so they would know. And this is all discussed between the auditor's office, the assessor's office and ours. And we all worked out the plan and I think it will be a good move forward with, because the question was, well, we couldn't not, how about we just continue handing the forms out? And if six of one, a half of dozen of the other, it's kind of nice to have them because the problem you run into nowadays, we used to tell people to go to office apply it to get a form and they don't have them anymore. So the best, I think, solution was with the help of our county attorney was to put together a disclaimer that says, we're not offering legal advice on these two types of documents. And those are the only two forms that we hand out that would have any reflection on transfer of ownership of a parcel or property.
Those are the two most utilized.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a crest to approve the standard operating procedure for dispensing blank quick claim deeds and survivorship affidavits. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good seeing you, John.
You too.
Expo Center, again, Laurie Daly. We have a Kelsey's Steakhouse Catering Agreement for 2019. Is this in an addition to the other ones that we approved?
Yeah. We just didn't get it in.
Okay.
My bad.
Any questions or comments? I'll make the motion. Second. We have a motion and a second for Kelsey's Steakhouse Catering Agreement.
Good steaks.
For 2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying signs. Motion carries. Now I'm hungry. It happens every time.
While we're talking about caterers, excuse me for one second. All seven of our caterers will be on site offering orders at the events.
Nice.
Yeah.
Very nice. Good. Get a little buy-in on the front end, huh? Next up, Voice Systems. Take us through this.
This is the same thing that Scott, that you approved for Scott. This is our internal key ledger or accountable system.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Voice Systems and Annual Maintenance Acceptance Agreement for our accounting system out at the Expo Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm better. I don't mind it. I don't know if you still like it, yeah. And we get, we dug into it a little bit more. It does a lot more than just how we have reinterpreted it.
Well, good. Good.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Laurie. Next up, Don Wellsen, Mr. IT of Porter County.
What?
We locked the door on you there, Don.
Just like the don't cows, we only know one way to get back.
One way. And to get out. Okay, what do we got here? We got a, we got a purchaser agreement for a copier, right, for the juvenile detention center, right?
Yes, for the clerk's office at the.
Oh, so it's for the clerks over at the county building.
No, the clerks at the juvenile.
At the juvenile, okay. Just want to know where these are going.
And we got state pricing from Adams Remco on that. Plus Adams Remco offers a three-year fixed maintenance cost and the clerk agreed to pay for that.
Oh, good. I'll serve it up. We can do both at the same time. Oh, we can?
Motion to approve the copier purchase agreement and the copier maintenance agreement.
Second. We have a motion and second for Adams Remco. This is for purchase agreement for the juvenile services. And Adams Rem, this is also a three-year fixed copier maintenance agreement for the same machine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. What do you got next? NITCO?
Uh, NITCO, uh, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, it's a contract to put in a backup internet service with the help of Comcast, fine, uh, to help, uh, whatever happened a few weeks ago, that we can at least get back, back in the service. It's gonna be a little bit slower, and the telephones, um, they should be okay at that point, but the internet will be a little bit slower, because the bandwidth is considerably less.
Don, you.
The backup bandwidth, not normally, right?
Yeah, it's better.
Would you sort of give everybody, um, just a little bit of, I don't see Rob coming up here today, but I know Rob, our 911 directors here. Could you guys sort of get, or to at least give everybody what happened about a month ago, or whenever it happened, the day when we dropped our service here at the county? I think a lot, you know, a lot of people saw the outage, but this is our opportunity now to explain what happened. Uh, it was really out of our, uh, out of our realm of responsibility, but it was sort of a weird deal, the way it went down, I thought. But, uh, please, uh, enlighten us, or enlighten the public.
Well, basically it was that winter storm that came through, the icing got on top of this, uh, tree, and knocked the tree limbs down onto RMC's telephone pole, which is where our fiber happened to be in that section of the county. And, uh, broke the, uh, the voltage line, came down and shorted out the fiber. But they got the first part fixed where they thought it was at, within, you know, a few hours, it wasn't too bad. But then we kept on finding, well, it's not going, it kept on going down the line another hundred feet, or another 500 feet, and they find some more breaks. That's what took so long.
So, it was just, it was just a series of unfortunate events?
It's an act of nature.
Yeah.
We couldn't do anything about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, NITCO explained that in their 53 years, uh, excuse me, 35 years of their field engineer, uh, they've never seen anything like this. What was supposed to happen to stop the succession of breaks did not happen. So, as Don explained, when the tree hit the wires, it was supposed to hit a breaker. That breaker was not tripped, causing a surge of power to a volt box. Uh, there were approximately 48 circuits in that box. Uh, only about six or seven of them were salvageable, the rest were melted, caught on fire, and then there were three faults along, uh, they have, they have one mile, but they have to dig up fiber and replace a circuit. So, this was not just exposing lines, because I know that was a question from the commissioners' office.
Yeah.
Uh, those exposed lines were encased in steel, uh, but that one had stopped this. Again, if that fault had, had hit, the way it was supposed to break, we would have just not even noticed an interruption in service. But something that they'd not foresee, and they have assured us that their engineers are now inspecting every inch along that line to see, to make sure that it's not happening in the future.
Yep. Thank you, gentlemen, for that explanation, because I, I just felt that the public needed to have that, because that, that put us in a bind for a while. And, uh, when you start talking 911 and public safety, it gets hairy, and we don't like that. So, um, thank you for everything you guys did. I know we were chasing our tail there for a while, but thank you. I think we all, I think with the way we handled it and responded was, was great. So, um, but thank you for the definition and, and what happened. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for, uh, the sales contract to provide a temporary backup service to admin center, uh, for 199, uh, for an install fee of $199 and a monthly fee of $286.85. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. And then we got three quotes for the TVs for the Expo Center, again. Um, boy, um, we got three quotes here. Don, take us, lead us.
Lead us.
Or do you want Lori to lead us?
I think Lori should come up.
Yeah, I think Lori should lead us.
Well, I think I can, I think these are, these are, what are the size? I want to make sure I get the size right.
Eighty-five.
Eighty, so these are three 85-inch.
Four.
Thank you. Eighty-five inch TVs that will be mounted in the Expo Center space, um, throughout the location, and they'll be, it's, it's just part of having an event center and, and being able to communicate digitally now, instead of, uh, putting, taping banners up and that type of thing. We're really trying to get away from that out there, so these are the TVs for the event space. So, if you have a wedding or something, you can put pictures on it, you can do all kinds of things, and there's four of them located within this space. So, they'll be very prominent, uh, and very identifiable. So, uh, we're, we're pretty excited about that.
Motion to approve, um, the quote from Broadway Music at $12,939.94.
Second. We have a motion and second for TVs for the Expo Center renovation. Broadway Music at $12,939.94 was the responsible quote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Don. Next up, we got Ray Cloyde, um, and Chris Cortina. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you Ray Cloyde. Ray is our new Buildings Facilities Director. You can stand up and turn around and wave to everybody. Ray, uh, is a Porter County resident. Uh, when our last Buildings Facility Person tendered their resignation to move on to better things, uh, we, we did a pretty big search, and we, uh, all found Ray, and, uh, he's been here now, what, two weeks, three weeks? Three weeks. Two weeks? My time flies, right? And, uh, we're really excited having Ray here for us, and, uh, we're, I, I know personally, being a building guy, I'm very excited about this hire, and I think that, uh, I think he brings a lot of credibility and, and, and knowledge to Porter County Government. So, as you've heard me say before, welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Excited to be here.
Yeah, we're looking forward to working with you, Ray. So, what we got now is a Mitsubishi Electric UPS System Group Maintenance Contract with Sheriff's Department. And is this the backup batteries for the sheriff's?
Yes, sir.
Generator?
Yes, sir.
This is not 911 generator, this is sheriff's generator, correct?
We're combining both.
We're combining both, right.
It gives us a discount of $440.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second, uh, for UPS System Group Maintenance Contract with the Sheriff's Department. This is for Mitsubishi Electric. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ray. Good luck.
That was $8,400.
Correct. Yeah, they were combined. Hey Bob?
Hello?
Hey Matt, how you doing?
Good.
What do we got?
First in, item is the open bid for the first, uh, 126, this is a 700 north over Soft Creek.
Item open? We have just one to.
Oh, okay, that makes more sense. Uh, the bid from Garrett Construction is $1,247,800. $1,247,800.
Engineers estimate on this was $1 million.
Was $1 million?
Well, we're gonna take this and take under, fight them, review it. Uh, Matt and, uh, Brandon are with USI, are gonna do what we have to.
You got some utility issues as part of this problem? That's the, that's the bottom, the bottom line?
We had three back out yesterday. Matt said, "Thank you, but they're not doing it."
It's, uh, what, a utility line issue, and then you also some?
NITCO's gonna degenerize it, but the fact is, is we have to do coffer dams on a certain section around, and because of the height of that, we're at, the coffer dams are 40-foot size sheet piles, and they have to get pretty tall equipment to be able to, um, pound it down. It's not vibration, it's gonna be, um, hammered down. And the fear is, is that the equipment is gonna be in the lines anyway, even if they degenerize it. So, the option was, is that use smaller equipment and slice the sheet pile in, but it's only in that particular area of the coffer dam. So, that's why we think that they are backing out.
Yeah, and our bids are, bid documents are written that, you know, we have the ability to throw out all the bids, uh, rebid it once we get some more information from the utilities. So, we're gonna be working with our consultants to get that information and, uh, and just evaluate this.
Okay. It's all you can do.
Thank you.
Well, I just, I think it's important to note, that's why this probably is a little bit beyond the estimate that we had from our engineers, is because of the.
The utility issues.
A little bit of a.
There's no risk.
Yeah, they're putting their liability in there, so, understand.
Well, I recommend, you know, due to, due to, uh, the, uh, condition of that bridge, and that that road is a significant, uh, transportation vein, you know, within our, our, uh, roads, that we accept it and get it, start, and get this done.
We'll look at it.
That's just my opinion.
If not, that much more.
No, it isn't that much more.
Twenty-five percent more.
But, I mean.
Well, it is what it is. Yeah.
Let's take a look at it.
Thank you.
Next up, Falling Water Subdivision, easement vacation. Sounds like a spring break.
This is in Falling Waters subdivision. The easements that are out there were dedicated to the county commissioners. They want to remove a particular easement, this is between lots 240 and 239. Um, we poured down the staff report. The reason is, is because they had a prospective buyer that wanted to, uh, essentially put their house right smack in the middle of these two lots, and everything. We went out there and we reviewed everything, we did a utility search on that, there are no utilities down there, and there is not a storm line running in that. The easement is essentially not being used, so our recommendation was to go ahead and vacate.
Uh, motion to approve the easement vacation.
Second. We have a motion and second for Falling Water Subdivision Easement Vacation Discussion.
I guess to further explain it, they basically ran the easement down the vast majority of the lots, side yards.
Well, and ultimately, we're taking two lots and making a lot and putting it in one house.
And we're not using it, so.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next up, Bob.
Alright. Uh, these are first readings here, and, um, for rezonings. The first one is, uh, Plan Commission Resolution 19-01. The petitioner here is James Zimmer. Their request is to amend, uh, the zoning map from I-2 General Industrial District to our rural residential district. It's a one acre, uh, piece of land, it's on the east side of, uh, 400 East, and, uh, it's been a residential structure there prior to any client commission ordinances. This was rezoned to industrial in this area, because of all the railroad tracks. Mr. Zimmer would like to keep this as a residential structure, so we're, the Plan Commission, uh, forwarded this recommendation, the favorable recommendation, uh, plead by 90 votes.
So, in a nutshell, it's currently non-residential zoning, there's residential, uh.
There's a residential.
House on it now, and it's now, with today's title issues and things like that, the banks are unwilling to do loans or sell, or, or transfers unless the underlying zoning's correct.
Correct. Okay. Because residential is not allowed in this.
Okay. So, since this is a rezone, we'll have to open it up, so we're gonna suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public meeting. Uh, we're gonna give everybody three, uh, opportunities to come up to speak in favor or in, not in favor. Um, the first, uh, first call, is anybody wishing to come forward to address this board in speaking against this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? And with that, we will close the public hearing, open it up to the commissioners' meeting, and, uh, open it up to the board.
If you have any questions, we're on. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second.
On first reading.
On first reading. We'll rezone, uh, motion and second for rezone 327 North 400 East for petitioner James Zimmer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. What we'll be doing, second reading in our next meeting. Uh, next up, Bob, go ahead.
Uh, this is Plan Commission Resolution Number 19-02. Uh, petitioner's trust number 1907. This is in care of Attorney Todd Lee. Uh, the request is to amend the zoning map from R1 Low Density Cease and End of Residential District to OT Office and Technology District. This is located on Burlington Beach Road, just east of the Horizon Bank, it's at the intersection of Burlington Beach and North High Met. This was heard before the Plan Commission at their February meeting date of, um, February 27th. It was forwarded to the commissioners with favorable recommendation, again, by 90 votes.
Okay, so we'll do the same program again. We're gonna suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing. Uh, we'll give, anybody wishing to come forward, uh, first call to speak against, uh, this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll open it up to the board, and any questions or comments of Mr. Lee?
Nope. I'm very familiar with that area.
Okay.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second. With, uh, motion and second, we have a motion and second to rezone the south of Burlington Beach Road between Calumet Avenue and Explorer Drive?
On first reading.
On first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. And we're now coming to the end. Uh, last one we got here, we have a request to display information table in the rotunda of the admin building from Monday, May 6th through Friday, May 10th, for household hazardous waste and November 4th through the 8th, uh, for 2019 for America Recycles Day. I did your work, I just did your whole work for you there. Uh, any questions?[1701.33]